So we are just waiting for our audience to attend. We have Charlie to open the activizome.
Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting for December 6th. I'll start with a roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Dr. Lyle.
Here.
Bob Coe.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Charlie Pomassano.
Here.
And who's not here? Ryan Welkum.
Yeah.
And Rick Tenter. So we've got eight of us here tonight. Okay, the first item on our agenda is an approval of an acquired plan for 17 Harrison Street slash 198 Water Street. I understand we are not going to have anybody give presenting?
Um, we were originally, and we happen to have Ever Chandler here. If there's any questions you might, you know, you might have for him. He's sort of lovely to speak to if you want to. I'll pull up the plan if you want to just give a quick synopsis.
And Rick, I do need to recuse myself from that one.
Thank you. So, um, Brian, actually, we don't need it. This is not a special permit.
Correct.
So we don't need it.
Yeah. Still here though.
Yeah.
Stand by.
Yeah.
Hi. Hi, Everett Champmore, Winter's GEC. Um, I did the survey here for the Dovens. Uh, they are purchasing a small parcel of land from Betsy Woodman next door.
A fairly sizable parcel.
A very, a small parcel, yes. She has a very large parcel that, uh, still has the required area. Uh, so it doesn't change anything in respect to the conformance with the, um, the area requirements. Uh, you can see in the center of the plan, there is a diagonal line, uh, there. That is the, that is the, the existing lot line. And to the bottom of the page is the, the new parcel, parcel B. Uh, you can see how the fence area crosses the, uh, crosses out of the existing parcel A that I figured out. So this is just a, this is just a, uh, convenience to swear off the board for the Dovens.
And am I correct that the parcel to the north was a set of previous day in our plan that was enjoying that part of the?
Yeah, it was done in 2021.
Does anybody have any questions for Sharon? Not, I would accept a motion to, um, endorse the, or not acquire that.
Move to endorse the, um, and, and on?
Okay. Second, second of all, um, since Charlie is not voting, we do not need a roll call. So all in favor, please raise your hands.
I mean.
You'd vote? Okay, done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is the continued public hearing, um, for the city of Newburyport. Three High Street, also known as 447 Merrimack Street. I understand this is another continued, another request to continue.
For just two weeks.
For, for the next meeting, right? For the 20th. But I have a motion to, um, move this continuance to the 20th.
I'll move to continue the site plan review application till December 20th.
Thank you. Second.
One second.
I could have a second. Now we're going to do a roll call, um, because Charlie is not, never use it. So, um, Alden.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Bob.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
I vote yes. So that is continuing. Uh, the next item is a public hearing for Eileen and Conny Ryan, uh, for 350 High Street for a 6C special permit. Brittany.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Costa, 30 Green Street in Newburyport. I'm half of Eileen and Conny Ryan. Uh, and with me this evening is Eileen Raff, who is the architect on the project. Uh, as the chair indicated, uh, this is a 6C special permit, uh, for 350 High Street in Newburyport. You go to the next slide, please. Um, so the property is located in the R2 zoning district, is also in the DCOD. Not that that comes into play here, but just thought you wanted to know that. Uh, Brian's proposed to convert the existing barn on their property to a single family home. And then, uh, reduce or revert the existing two-family structure to a single family home. So the existing structure on the property, which is the historic structure, which I'll talk about in a minute, is actually a two-family home. There's a residence at the rear of that home. Um, it's got a bedroom, kitchen, family room, things like that. But it's a two-family home. It has been since before the Ryans brought the property in 2002. So the idea is to convert that back into a single family and then have the barn be the other, uh, single family on the lot in conformance with section 6C. Um, the property had, is conforming for a lot area at 33,423 square feet. Uh, where 10,000 is the minimum required for a single family use and 15,000 for a two-family use in the R2 district. So obviously it has more than enough square footage. Property has 133.10 feet of frontage where 90 for a single family is required and 120, uh, is the minimum for a two-family use. Um, therefore it meets that requirement as well. Um, so it's conforming. The only non-conformity is the front yard setback. Again, it's a historic house. It's at 11.5. Um, that historic setback obviously is not going to be impacted by the renovations to the, to the barn. Uh, next slide, please. Otherwise, it conforms to all of the dimensional requirements. In fact, has a significant, it's a large lot. We're going to see it in a little bit, has a significant amount of open space. Um, and very little lot coverage. So the existing two-family, uh, structure was constructed around 1770, according to the assessor's records. 1780, according to the district data sheets and the Form B. There is a Form B on this property. Uh, the structure is listed as contributory. It was known as the Josiah Little House. Um, the Ryans have been great caretakers of it. I would say it's in pretty close to the pristine condition. Um, and, um, we have been to the historic commission. Uh, this is one of your requirements. We'll talk a little bit later. They are more than happy to hold a preservation restriction, um, on this. We have given them a draft preservation restriction. Uh, modeled on another 6C that we did, um, in the city not too long ago. Uh, they reviewed it and, you know, aside from waiting to hear what MHC would say, or this board would say, um, are certainly willing to hold the restriction and approve the draft as is. Um, so if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is, um, the lot. Um, as you can see, it is, um, large. Um, there is 33,000 square feet. Um, you can see the house on the left-hand side. Um, at the front, that's the historic structure and then the barn at the back. Uh, so the barn is in historic. There was a, there was an outbuilding there at one point in time, but very clearly, um, over the years was removed and different barns were put up there. Um, but certainly this structure is not historic, but it is old and certainly was built before, uh, 2021, when the board changed the, the 6C requirements. Um, you will also see on this site plan, and you can also see the extent of all of the setbacks, um, and how conforming it all is. Um, what's also noted on this plan is the current driveway is right, um, above the existing single family home. Um, the proposal is, is to close off that curb cut on High Street. And then have a driveway closer to, um, the property next door on that side of the lot. And then, um, have parking for each of the structures there and then one towards the back. Um, we have had the DPW out there. Um, they are very happy with this proposed location. There was a little concern about, um, electric pole or utility pole in High Street. Uh, they don't have any issue with that. Um, what's particularly noticeable about this is there's a series of very large old trees that run along the existing driveway. Um, they will not be touched and there's no plan to remove those trees or anything with those trees. So those are going to stay intact. And then there's a, a small area of vegetation that already runs in addition to the fence, uh, that runs along the shared line with, I think that's the Newcurse property right there. So, um, that won't, that, that also won't be, um, won't be disturbed during the reconstruction. Um, and, uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, um, Eileen, um, to talk about, uh, the proposed. Well, actually, if you can go, I think we have some photos. So if you go to the next slide, here's the mind maps, just so you can see what the area is like. Um, maybe it is where we could just walk out the door and see it at the end of the street. Um, so it's right across the street from here practically. Um, and then the next slide, please. So here's the current front entry. And, um, so you'll see the driveway is going to go to the left of that utility pole. Um, and still stay about five feet off the fence, did we say?
Even more.
Yeah.
Like seven.
Like seven feet off that fence line. So, um, the DPW was fine, um, with all of that. Um, and so with that, we're going to turn it over to Eileen.
Oh, Lisa, um, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So, um, what you see in front of you is the, uh, existing barn. And just to orient you on this drawing, the top two drawings are the existing front and left side of the existing barn and the bottom two drawings are proposed. So I'll talk through some of those changes. On the bottom left drawing, you can see that we've added some dormers on the, on the top, on the second level, um, doing doghouse doors to pick up on the original structure up front. Um, the openings for the garage will stay the same, but get modified as doors, um, as the type of style, I should say. Um, and then the openings of the door and the window just look locked. Um, to the left, you can see a very small addition. It's, it's serving its purpose of a mudroom, um, and bathroom addition on the left side there. Um, they're very modest, um, in size. Um, on the bottom right drawing, you can see the west side elevation changing. And it's that you can see the small addition that I just spoke of, but on its, um, um, side view. And then going towards the rear is a similar form of the gambrel structure, um, heading towards, towards the rear of the property. Um, with, uh, dormers, um, added to that as well. Um, the building height, uh, remains the same. There's no change to that. Um, so other than the dormers popping in, um, really the, the, the form itself is, is pretty intact. And then we go to the next slide. We can see the other elevations. Um, the bottom left is the rear, um, elevation. Again, that, that added gambrel form coming towards us in that drawing. Um, and then the right side drawing similarly, um, you could see it from the side view. Um, very modest in scale and approximately 1,600 square feet right now. And we are adding, um, 499 square feet to bring it just, just under, uh, well, 2,100, about 21, 31 square feet. Um, the materials on this, on this, uh, building will be, um, high-end windows, double hung, um, insulated glass. Um, on the front elevations, we're going to, um, um, be aligned with the existing house of six over six. But here on this back elevation and side, we've opened up a little more just to be six over one. Um, just to give a little opportunity for more light. Um, siding is clavered, um, link clavered. And then the, uh, roof shingles, uh, were architectural, um, asphalt shingles. Um, so, so detailing to be nice, the trim, et cetera. Um, very modest again, and it's, in its additions and forms and, and very much, um, minimal. If we go back to the front elevation, really minimal in, in changes to what you experienced from the High Street, um, facade. Now with that, I'll, I'll let Lisa continue with her presentation.
Uh, thank you, Eileen. Um, so I'd like to go through the 6C special permit requirements and then the general 10H7, uh, special permit requirements as well. Um, so under 6C, if you made your changes in 2021, April of 2021. Uh, the first criteria is the lot and building shall comply with the following development standards. And that is that they have to comply with the two-family standards. Um, and as I indicated earlier, um, the property more than complies with the two-family standards for a frontage and lot area. Uh, both buildings have to comply with the setback requirements for principal single-family buildings. Um, they both do, but for, of course, the non-conforming that's existing, we're not changing for the historic structure at 11.5 feet from the front yard setback from High Street. Uh, both residential buildings shall comply with all other applicable zoning requirements. Um, and they certainly do. There's not going to be any changes at, and we meet all of the rest of the requirements. Uh, and then the next, um, section is that they, um, there's one of three different ways, um, that the proposed building can be arranged on the lot. So the first two go to if you're adding a building to the lot. Uh, the last one, C, um, goes to, uh, one residential building may be created by conversion of an accessory building in existence on the effective date of the ordinance from which this section is derived, such as the garage carriage house. Obviously that's what we're doing. In such case, the converted building shall not be increased in height or expanded outward other than by dormers, porches or decks not exceeding 500 square feet in total. Um, the applicant proposal falls under this section C. Um, we're proposing to convert the rear barn, as I said. Uh, the conversion is not increasing the height and only expanding outwardly by 302 square feet, which is less than the 500 square feet. So you're asking, well, what's the 499? That's, that's not the, the actual footprint extension. The 302 is the actual footprint extension. The 499 is, is if you include the new area on the second floor with the dormers, right? So that's the total, 499 is the total new square footage. 302 is the footprint expansion. Or the outward expansion, if you will. Um, when the lot contain, the next criteria, um, next slide, please, is when the lot contain, oh, sorry, thank you. Lot, lot contains a contributing structure on the district data sheets, uh, then we have to offer a historic, um, uh, preservation restriction, uh, in which we have done that. Um, and I noted that in my earlier presentation and, um, given the magnitude of historic nature of this main structure, the historic commission is more than happy to have a preservation restriction on the Josiah Little House. Uh, before granting the special permit under this section succeed, the planning board should find that all of the following criteria are met. The design and layout of the buildings and open space in the site will be consistent with the established character scale, massing and density of the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, here, the proposed conversion of the barn to a residential structure will certainly be consistent with the established character of asking a scale and density of the surrounding neighborhood. We're not adding any building, uh, they're very modest extension of that building. Obviously, we're not changing the main building and the surrounding buildings are similar. Um, this is one of the largest lots in the area. Directly behind this is Parker Bridge. You know, that, that's, that's a big convenience. So a lot of open space in the back. Then there are two homes, of course, on either side. And then across the street, of course, is this property and a couple of other single-family homes. Uh, there are no, uh, external changes to the prominent historically significant building. Um, and consistent with, um, succeed, the conversion of the barn to a residence has minimum impact on the appearance of it as it is expressed from High Street. Uh, further, the barn is setback from High Street and not approaching on any of the surrounding properties. Uh, the next criteria is the building and accessory off-street parking will maintain compatible relationship to the adjacent properties in terms of location and design and not significantly reduced in the privacy of adjacent properties. Again, we're not moving the building at all. Uh, we're adjusting the parking, um, and that is, that should be compatible as well. Uh, the Ryans have talked about this with all of their neighbors. Um, I don't know that anybody is here tonight. Um, and nobody seems to have an issue with the, the layout and design of the proposed project. The developing, a second residential building in the lot will be equally or more beneficial to the neighborhood than subdividing the lot or providing two dwelling units and a two-family dwelling. Uh, so subdividing the lot's not feasible. Uh, there's not enough space to create two not, two lots here. There's already an existing two-family in this building. I just want to say that. Um, and, uh, we don't want to create any new non-conformities by obviously subdividing a lot. Um, I indicated earlier, there is a small two fam, the small unit in the back of the main structure. Um, you know, in that, instead of adding to the structure, the Ryans thought it was much more appropriate to have the conversion of the barn. And I, what I would like you to do, and you're going to jump ahead because I was going to use this for a different purpose, but I think it's really important for this particular, um, point. If you go all the way to the very last slide. So we did a sketch of what it would be like to add to by right to the existing home to make it a full two-family home. So the lot is so big that by right, you could essentially add 10,000 square feet of living space to that house. By right, without violating DCOD, without changing the roof line, no historic review. It's already a two-family. It has sufficient frontage and sufficient area. And those are the two kind of back of the napkin sketches that would do that. So as you can see, certainly that's not what the Ryans want to do, but this criteria goes to whether or not that would be, you know, you could do a two-family. Yes, the answer is you could do a two-family. Um, no, we don't think it's appropriate for the lot. Um, and would prefer to use the existing, um, barn that's there. So if you can go back up to that, um, slide. And granting the special permit, um, to a lot, to residential buildings on a lot, the planning board may impose building size setback standards that are more restrictive. I don't know, um, that the board wants to do that, but if you did, we'd have to talk about it. I don't think it's, uh, an issue here. And then, uh, the last one is in consideration, increase in value representing the granting of a special permit under this section. Um, the, uh, the applicant would have to pay into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, $20 per square foot of the additional second residential unit. I might add that if we were to do a two-family as just expanding by right, we would not have to pay into the Affordable Housing Trust. We would be able to do it by right. Um, so this actually allows for the payment into the Affordable Housing Trust as well. Uh, in addition, and you don't have to go any further right now. Well, you go to the next slide. Um, I'm just, I didn't do a slide for every one of the general special permit criteria, but I'll just run through it. Um, so under 10H7, uh, in order to grant a special permit, the general special permit criteria has to be met as well. And the first is that the requested use is listed in the table of use regulations. And here, um, the property is located in the R2 zoning district and 6C, um, and a two-family use is allowed in the, um, in the use table. Um, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Here, again, the use is a 6C is allowed by special permit in the R2 district. Um, and it allows for a modestly dense district that already exists in the city. We're not changing the density at all, but for the 302 square feet of additional footprint. Uh, and the city includes 6C in order to allow more appropriate redevelopment of a lot rather than something like that two-family that I expressed on there earlier. In fact, I think if you go back to your minutes of your, um, February and March meetings, when you adopted the new 6C, one of the concerns was having the very large two-family on the lot, AKA the issues that were brought up in the Hancock Street development. Um, the where 6C was not employed and the larger two-family was used by right essentially. So, um, we believe that we certainly, uh, meet that. This proposal is much more desirable to the public convenience and welfare in the general area than just doing a straight-up, uh, two-family adjustment on the lot. But the next is the requested use will not create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Here, uh, the use on the lot's not changing. Um, we're going to have plenty of parking on the lot. Uh, we're cutting out one of the curb cuts and only going to have one in a better location according to DPW. The next is the requested use will not overload public water, drainage or sewer. Again, there's no change in use on the property and that shouldn't have any impact at all. Uh, the next general special permit criteria is whether or not there's any special regulations for the use for the request of the special permit, and there are none. Uh, the next is that the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Again, the 6C is appropriate for this district, the two-family use, which we're not seeking a special permit for, but is appropriate for the R2 district, uh, and therefore it won't impair the integrity or character of the district, particularly the location of this barn at the back, the modest outward expansion of it, um, along with the continued, uh, two-family use. Uh, the requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use. Again, we're not changing the use at all. And the 6C is still at, there are plenty of single-family homes along the High Street or and/or in carriage houses along High Street. And then the last is that the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner so as to commit any dangerous, nauseous, injurious or other objectionable activities. And of course, that would not be the case here. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, I just want to show, there's a picture of the existing barn. Uh, that is on the property. Uh, next slide, please. And here's the back of it. And next slide, please. And again, another picture of the back of the barn. And the side, next slide. And then here's the side closest to the, uh, existing structure on the lot. That would be the east side. And next slide, please. And then there's the west side. And then the next slide. Now we have a picture of the, the main house, which is remaining unchanged. Next slide. And there's the back of, um, the main house and the entry into that second unit. Next slide. And here's the side of this house. I'm, I'm, all of you have seen it a million times. Uh, next slide, please. And again, the front closer up on the front and the next slide. And against the east side of the major side, a little house. And the next slide, please. And then again, another shot of the east side. Um, so with that, um, we believe that the board can grant a special permit for 6C and allow the conversion of this, um, carriage house, uh, to a single-family home, uh, which would eliminate the two-family use in the main house. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Who need questions for?
I just have one small question.
Sure.
How close will the driveway be to the crosswalk out here?
Um, so we looked at that, uh, with the DPW and, um, I don't know if we showed the crosswalk on there. You still have to, you're still, we're still east of the crosswalk, right?
Yes.
It's, uh, yeah, because I crossed the street when I came over.
And the, the crosswalk comes in roughly in front of the butter of the Nickerson's, right at the north.
Yeah.
Northwest way, yes.
Up there.
So, so someone aligned with their front door.
So a little bit further up.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I had to cross over. I needed to give you one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there vegetation right up to the sidewalk?
No, that, no, there's a fence there. Um, but there's no real vegetation right there. Then there's, um, small evergreens and some other ground covering that's planted as you go towards the back. So there's some, so that vegetation you see there is going to go because that's where the driveway is going to go. Right? And so there's a little bit of grass on the left, but the fence starts a little bit, as you can see, the fence starts further back.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I have no problem with the overall concept. I'm sure the planning office has addressed review of the issue of the wording of the zoning, uh, item C, uh, which says that the only outward expansion is by dormers, porches or decks. So I think, I'm not sure that we can actually grant that special permit. I think that it's something that we would either need to amend the zoning ordinance or, um, get a variance. I think, probably the best thing to do would be amend the zoning ordinance.
So I, I, I disagree with you because I don't think it says only. First of all, that word is not used. Um, secondly, I can tell you that the zoning administrator, um, is the one that sent us forward under this and her job is to interpret the zoning. Um, based upon that, my client expended a significant amount of money to get to this point. Um, in the zoning, nowhere to porches and decks count towards square footage of a building. Nowhere in the zone. They don't even count towards setbacks if they're not above three feet. So nowhere in the zoning do we include porches and decks as part of square footage of the building. And I went back to the minutes of the February 17th meeting. And I think it's interesting that the chair at the time, Bonnie, said in her presentation, and a conversion of the garage or carriage house with no more than 500 square feet of expansion. Didn't limit it to, she said, expansion of the carriage house or barn. Decks and porches don't expand anything in the city of Newburyport under zoning. They just don't do it. They're not counting as square footage that expands anything. And that's how we read this. And despite the, um, recitation throughout the minutes about how the goal of the board, a lot of the goal was to make this ordinance clear and easier to understand for people than the prior ordinance. This is the second 6C I've been in here on, and we've had a debate about the language of the ordinance, right? Uh, not on this particular point, but so I think everybody tries really hard. And Rick, I looked through the ordinance, the minutes to see if you had any discussion of that particular point related to porches and decks, and nowhere in the minutes do you talk about that. The only thing that's talked about relative to the expansion, the 500 square feet of expansion is Bonnie's comment related to carriage houses and garages. In fact, one of the things that she does say very specifically also is, one of the things that you're trying to prevent is there are times when a huge two-family structure would be inappropriate. Right? So that's one of the things you're trying to prevent, which we could do by right. The Ryans don't want to do that. The Ryans raise their family here. They could turn around, there are people in this room that would do this. They, they could turn around and sell this house for a significant amount of money to anybody to put that addition on or something like it by right in this city. And that's not the intent of this ordinance. And I certainly can't believe. And I certainly can't believe that the intent of the ordinance is to not allow a person to add any footprint. To a carriage house or barn if they're going to reuse it for residential purpose. I understand that you don't want to have some giant thousand square foot addition or something like that, right? But the use of the term porches or decks. Nowhere in the ordinance do they count as square footage to a structure. And that's how we read it, and that's how the zoning administrator read it.
So how, how would you explain? The inclusion of words dormers, porches, or decks as part of that limitation?
I, I, I think that it's confusing is my point. I think that you porches, decks, additions. You, I guess you would include all of it, right? I mean, and we're not doing anything in excess of all of it, right? We're having an addition and porches and decks that are still under. Four hundred ninety nine square feet, five hundred square feet. So I, I just, if we, if somewhere in the ordinance, we included porches and decks as part of a building. Then I think that it would be clear, but we don't. So you might want to amend it to make it clear. But our interpretation, the zoning administrator's interpretation. Is that you can expand. A footprint by not more than five hundred square feet.
Any other questions? Hey, I will open up for a public comment here, as anybody wishes to speak on this application.
We did have one hand raised a moment ago, but I don't see it right now. A little bit of questions on that, but I don't see that now.
That case, I'm closing the public comment. What do you, yeah, now open it to the banker.
I was curious about utility connections and understanding that there are still. Two residential units on the site and there may not be capacity issues in terms of. Available utility capacity in the street. How are those connections actually anticipated? Particularly electrical, will that be overhead, will that be buried?
I, I don't.
That thought about?
No, I don't think we've gotten that far in the, in the plans. I don't think anything's buried out there. Yeah.
Open it up for. Any discussion with the board or? You have the motion?
I'll move to approve the succeed special permit with the special conditions. Included in the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, I will do a vote call.
Yes.
Sorry, can I just ask for clarification? Is that a vote to include the condition that were drafted as possible in the staff report? Or is that a component of your vote here?
Because of the special conditions.
Yes. Thank you. So that's the, no further subdivision contribution to the affordable housing trust. And the historical, historic mission, which is what's the sidewalk repair.
Let me just ask a question about the historic preservation restriction. So it says part of the grant of a building permit for the second or rear building that we have to have a. Fully drafted. Okay, well, I didn't have a fully drafted, that's fine. I thought it had to be before, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so we have Alden and Charlie, Beth.
Yes.
David. Bob.
Yes. Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
And I hate to do it, but I'm going to vote no. I really support this project, but I just don't feel comfortable given the way we wrote the ordinance, so I'm going to vote no. And it passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is a special permit for a brewery for brewing company or you have to a special difference.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is a special permit application for Newbury for brewing indoor pickleball and recreation usage. The brewery currently leases eight thousand three hundred thirty square feet. Inside a fourteen thousand three hundred thirty square foot building at Forte Pasture. There are no proposed changes to the existing physical building structure. The existing eight thousand three hundred thirty square feet of least indoor space will be broken down as follows. Two thousand two hundred seventy six square feet, which is our existing tasting room, which is no changes. Three thousand nine hundred nine square feet of new indoor courts, so two pickleball and one bocce court. Originally, when we met. With Andy, at the beginning of the summer, there was talk about potentially three pickleball courts. But there wasn't room for our brewing area and a third court, so we improvised and made a bocce court instead. So that's what you see in the middle area and the two pickleball courts are in the back area. The main entrance of the building is on the south side where the cursor is right there. One thousand square feet common area, walkways. Other recreation, five hundred eighty five square feet for brewing and packaging. Two hundred sixty nine square feet for storage of beer kegs and cans. We also have two brewing systems, one, one barrel, three vessel, direct fire brewing system, a five gallon test batch. Electric brewing system, our equipment hoses, brewing ingredients, removing our Q A lab. And our beer seltzer tasting into existing office number one. And we have a hundred and thirty square feet of reception area. And then various pickleball waiting slash staging areas seating for, for eight people. And seventy three square feet of entrance way hallway. So all areas are open to the public during operating hours. No memberships will be required. Everything's ground floor, wheelchair accessible, eighty eight compliant. Total onsite parking is fifty four spaces. Occupancy is one hundred and forty five people and five staff. And the bathroom requirements and layouts. Meet those numbers. We went through the zoning determination and also. The use requested is listed in the table of use regulations. As passed in October of this year with a second meeting on October thirtieth. That includes our location at Forte Pasture. Specifically, that was done for, to support the pickleball expansion here for the brewery. Is it essential, desirable to public convenience, welfare? Yes, pickleball provides a health and wellness benefit to our community and is enjoyed by people of all ages. And athletic ability, so indoor pickleball. Played in a climate controlled environment allows people to play year round. When the weather might not allow them to play outside. Those of you who have played pickleball know that there's an audible sound. When the paddle hits the ball and. Obviously, being inside, we're not going to provide any, or there's not going to be any sound issues with neighbors or, or outside the building. And I think this offers the city an opportunity for people to play pickleball and enjoy the sport. In an indoor setting without having to find a space outside that might create a noise pollution. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. We provide ample onsite parking that exceeds the parking code. The building is located on a wide dead end street and our busiest times at the brewery coincide with the hours and days that other businesses on the dead end street are closed. That's been the case in the last twelve years since, since we've been there. Nothing else will, will change with that. Pickleball wise, on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so we plan to be closed on Monday. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, in the mornings from nine AM to twelve PM will be a ten dollar walk in. So it's a nice opportunity for retirees, seniors, folks who want to use pickleball in a. In a social setting to come in, first come, first served. And, and be part of the, part of the community. So that's a service we're also offering on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings. On Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, pickleball courts will be reserved on an hour or two hour basis. By people online or in person on their arrival. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer system or any municipal system, not a concern of this project. Again, we're not making any changes to the exterior of the building. Any special regulations, not a concern of this project. Requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district. Again, we believe this will benefit health and welfare and add a, add a benefit for our community. And will not, will be in addition to the neighborhood and will not cause an excess. That can be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, correct? And the proposed use is in harming the purpose and intent of this ordinance, that is correct, so. Are there any questions about how we want to use the pickleball courts? Hopefully, this provides you some information, how, how we intend to use the pickleball courts. At our location and, and provide the course for public use.
Any questions, board? Yes, fine.
I'm just, I'm curious about the parking.
Sure.
And how much of the parking area you actually control?
Yeah.
And there's another tenant in the building.
Correct.
Have you factored in parking for that?
We have, yes, thank you. So earlier this week, I received a call that it was, there were dumpsters and trailers and. Love it. Snowmobiles and so on and so forth parked on the property. So currently, the demand at the brewery, because we don't have pickleball yet. We don't use those spots located on that side of the building and we're talking about. On the drawing, the upper right hand corner, those, yep, those spaces right there. So currently Meadows Construction, they own trucks and dumpsters. That they transfer trash to and from or, or building materials to and from their project sites. At the time, earlier this week, there were extra trailers for moving heavy equipment like cats and diggers. Those have been removed from the property. Those have been put on the landlord's personal property. And the dumpsters have been primarily moved out back. There were four when I drove in this morning, there were five when I left this afternoon. So our landlord has been our landlord for the last ten years, so we have a really good relationship with him. And I explained that should this. We get the special permit, should this open, we will leave these parking spaces open for our use, not for.
So is there anything in your lease that gives you like?
There is, but it's, yeah, it's on the original thirty six parking spots. So we can control it through the lease if we make a lease addendum, but I think at this point. Because we have such a great relationship, I made one call, they were gone the next day, so. He understands that this is a project we want to get done and, and you know, he, he doesn't want to create any issues for us either.
All of the spaces on the right side of the plan, are, are they striped?
No. They are except for the bottom two are not striped. Those two, well, we need to strike.
Any other questions?
Just, just to clarify then, does that satisfy the staff report requirement for the, the, the striped parking spaces?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't actually count them all myself, so.
Yes, sorry, if I may add, I, Jennifer Blanche, you know, looked at this particular issue and, and recommended special condition to address the issue that Bob had raised, and you were saying, you know. What's incorporated for staff report, just to give us that, it says there are a total of fifty spaces. Shall be required for the uses onsite, meaning both, you know, uses. No less than fifty spaces shall be striped and available parking as shown in the submitted plan, so the equipment plus the striping there. Or anything to be added, there's a few stripes obviously to be added, would address that concern that was discussed here. So, yeah, and, and the number and the actual availability of the people, so, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Want to follow up on that? I thought you said that there were fifty four spaces.
There's fifty four.
So are those fifty four or are those fifty?
No, that, that's fifty four on the.
So we don't, we don't really need to stripe this spot too.
We can if we want to make it a, yeah, delineated parking spot, yeah.
Can we find?
Yeah, more than a meter, people can see it by dark.
Looking at your floor plan, there's a, a door in the back, is that, is that a public door or is that just where you?
No, that's a, that's a locked door, that's an access door, metal door. So it has a panic exit on the exit side on the interior side, and then it's a metal handle that we had installed a few years.
So not that it's, not that it really affects, you know, whether this can be approved or not, but in effect. The person in the top right hand corner would have to walk all the way around the building to get, get in, that's a lot of walking. I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, I think most, well, ninety nine point nine percent of the folks will come in through the front.
Correct. Is there another door to get, I mean, the.
No, there's no other, there's no other access, so, and it's locked at all times. So we don't want people to be able to come in and, and access alcohol.
So even though, again, my point is that even though zoning requires those fifty spaces. It's likely that those last ten or so spaces probably aren't going to be used very much in years, it's like a lot of walks.
People are, you know, people are, they do what they do, right? So if somebody sees this, yeah, if they're at the front of the building and, and they've, you know, they don't want to walk all the way around this. That's a prerogative, I guess.
Well, these are very athletic people, right?
Yes, that's correct. Any athletic ability.
So, so I have a question, I don't know how to put my hand on this Zoom thing. May I ask?
You go ahead.
Okay, so I, I thank you for explaining a little bit about the public access to the pickleball courts. You had mentioned that there's going to be some sort of membership as well. Have you, have you refined that or defined that? And will this mean that there will always be public access to this in, in combination with a membership?
There will always be public access, there will not be any memberships required.
Oh, okay.
Says you, you're having a reserve time.
Yeah, you have to reserve a court, just like you would for any other activity, golf, whatever. You have to reserve the time. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Except for in the mornings, so the, those Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday mornings are, are designed to be more social.
For the walk-ins, you said.
Correct. Correct.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, when, when we were together before, when the pickleball National Association made, I didn't know there was one. I learned that, you were talking at that time, I believe, about potentially a seasonal outdoor court? Does that, does that fall away from the?
No, I think that, that could have been a different project, but we're not going to do anything outs, outdoors. This is just indoors and under, under the building's roof, so, you know, that's it.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing, this is the train public comment office, does anyone speak in this application? Anybody online? Okay, of course, and we'll put it up for discussion and the motion. Go ahead, Bertha.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the special conditions in, in the staff report.
Change scripting to scripting.
Yeah.
Is there a second? No seconds? Okay. Do a roll call again, Alden.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Brooke.
Yeah.
Cameron.
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
And I go again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And our final public hearing for tonight is the hearing for Bound Morale Development, one twenty four High Street. With a D R B special permit, a special claim for the use, and a special permit for lack of notice.
Members of the board, chair, for the record, Lisa Mead, me, Tellem and Costa, thirty Green Street, on behalf of Bound Morale Development. And Chris Horn, who is the principal. Members of the board, chair, for the record, we submit me tell them in Costa thirty Green Street on behalf of Bound Morale Development and Chris Horn, who is the principal in that company is here. And the architect on the project is Eileen Graff. And what we did with this project is see how many permits we could get to do the project. As I go through this, you'll see we've gotten quite a number of reviews. So um, this is a project at one twenty four High Street. For all of those, you'll see in a minute. This is the brick Federalist that is pretty close to being directly across from the George Washington statue. For those of you who don't know, a little piece of trivia. That statue of George Washington standing up is only one of two of them standing up in the entire world. The other one is in Paris. I used to tell people that on my little student tours. So this is a special permit for multifamily use. A D O D special permit due to the minor changes to the exterior of the main structure. And removal of an attachment of the existing garage and construction of a new additional garage in the rear. And a special permit for nonconformities due to the front yard setback and side setback of the existing garage, the front yard setback of the main structure. Side yard setback of the existing garage. Um, you don't usually hear special permits for nonconformities, but since this is in the D O D, you get to do everything. That is a special order. Um, brick federal style house was constructed around eighteen fourteen, but was gutted by a fire in two thousand and one. Um, some of the more, I'll say inappropriate additions are to the rear of the structure. We're going to talk about those a little bit. That's where actually the biggest change happens on our proposal. The property is currently mixed use, which is not allowed in the R three district. Um, the property includes an existing garage, which did not exist on the nineteen oh six, nineteen fourteen or nineteen twenty four historic maps, and it has a bit of an addition on the back that we're proposing to remove. Um, so you'll see that some of the inappropriate additions on the rear of the main structure includes a spiral staircase, which you all know was around in eighteen fourteen. Um, so we're, but we're trying to remove that so that it's more appropriate. Um, so with that, you can go to the next slide, please. So this does have a Form B. Uh, we were to the Historic Commission for the advisory review. Um, I believe you have that in your packet. You should. Um, and the Historic Commission was fine with our proposals and did not believe that it had an adverse impact on the historic nature of the building or the integrity of the district. Uh, so if you can go to the next slide, please. That's the second part of the Form B. Uh, you'll see that this is listed as contributory to the district on this page. Uh, next slide, please. And here are the, uh, here are the Sanborn maps. So this is eighteen eighty eight Sanborn map. And this is before they had divisions of property, but you can see the main structure up front. Next slide, please. And this is the eighteen ninety four. Now we have some lot lines that have gone in. We have a different outbuilding in the back. On this lot, this obviously that outbuilding no longer there. Next slide, please. And here's another footprint, no outbuildings in this particular slide. Next slide, please. Nineteen oh six, um, we have a lot as it exists today and no outbuildings whatsoever. Right, next slide, please. Then we have the nineteen twenty four assessors map, and there's that little addition on the side. Um, that doesn't exist either. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, excuse me, here's the nineteen twenty four assessors map. And here we have that that addition on the side is gone. The build, the lot itself takes the form it does today, and you have the main federal structure. Next slide. Um, so here's one of the historic photos. Um, this is referred to as the Albert Hale Hale House. And the Sewell Place, Sewell Place, excuse me, but this is a view from across the street when we used to have Elm Street on High Street. Next slide, please. And here is a photo of the building, as you can see, uh, in the Historic Commission report for us of this. Um, most of the roof was gone and obviously the windows, the interior completely gutted. Um, so next slide, please. So the proposal is to renovate the existing structure by changing the internal layout of the structure and converting it into a multifamily structure of four residential units. The multifamily use is allowed in the R three district by special permit, which is one of the permits we're seeking from you tonight. And I said the Historic Commission has issued its recommendation as well. We also had to go to the zoning board of appeals to see a variance, and it was kind of an odd situation. Um, the existing use is nonconforming. And so even though the mixed use isn't allowed in the district, you have to go to the closest district to find out what your dimensional requirements are. So it met the dimensional requirements of the nonconforming use. And when we switch it to the R three and have it be a conforming use, the requirements are different for frontage, lot area and height. So if we didn't get a variance and we wanted to make a change, we'd actually have had to make the building shorter. So, um, the zoning board saw the wisdom in our proposal and granted us three variances to allow the proposal to go forward. Um, and Eileen's going to go through these details in a minute, but what I just want to do is an overview of the changes we're proposing to the exterior of the structure. So we're adding an egress stair to the first floor on the easternly side of the building and replacing the existing window with a French door. Expanding two exterior window wells, one in the front and one on side elevation. Including the exist, in closing the existing decks in the rear and removing spiral staircase. And constructing an additional detached garage in the rear. I think one of the things that's really important, and Andy, you can go to the next slide, please. Is, um, there, this lot is almost entirely paved now, except for that one front corner. So everywhere on here that you see the marking for parking, this is actually pavement. What's being proposed is, and if you go to the two slides down, is that all of the crosshesh will become grass. And only the pavement in the gray where you see the cars will there be pavement. So we're removing a significant amount of pavement from the property and restoring it to pervious surface or grass and I love. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, well, let's go through some slides. So here's a, go back to the, excuse me, go down the first photograph. Thank you. So, um, these were taken off a real estate page, um, because they have photos I couldn't take. So, um, here's a photo of the front elevation. And next slide. And here's a more aerial photo. Um, you can see the project, you can see how deep the property is. Next slide, please. And again, here's a photo of another, uh, looking to the north. Next slide. And here's a rear photo. So you see all that stuff that was added in the back um, as a part of the two thousand and one renovations after the fire. Next slide, please. Again, here's the another photo of the back. Um, Eileen will explain how that's all going to change. Next slide. And here's the existing garage in the back. Next slide, please. And here's just some of the, uh, yeah, I was gonna say, we didn't really show that detail. So here's, um, on the easternly elevation, there's going to be some changes on this. Eileen will go over. Next slide, please. And here's that addition off of the garage in the back that we're removing. Next slide, please. And here's a picture from across the street of the mound. So you can see that, you can see the the one garage in the back, but you're not going to be able to see across the street the the new garage. Next slide, please. And again, here's across the street from the mound. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen.
Um, Logan, um, so, uh, the changes that are happening for this brick structure are are really rather minimal. So, um, and it's even hard to see having existing proposed on this sheet, but I'll point them out. On the right side is the proposed, and if you look to the bottom left, we just have a small window change at the ground level. Um, just for egress purposes. Thank you, Andy. And then to the right side of that same drawing. Um, and sitting in front of the sunroom, that's one story, you just see a side view um, of the proposed stair. Um, and I'll show that in another elevation for the eastern side where that's changing, but really this this elevation is very pretty much intact, um, from what exists today. Um, the next slide. Now we're on the western side of the property. This is the side where the driveway is. And what, um, is the easy thing to pick out is that spiral stair. Um, with those additions that you saw on the back elevations, it has, when it was, when it had the sort of office spaces um, as used, there was that addition that was rather commercial and feel. So the idea is to remove some of the, uh, some of the clutter of structure, that spiral stair goes away, and then two levels of decks are removed. And then the proposal is three tiered, um, small addition, um, um, on 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 three levels. And so you can see that on the right drawing. Um, that addition is going to be different in in materials, um, from the brick. That's going to be wood, uh, with clavards. Um, but keeping the same window type of the six over six windows, um, throughout. And then if we go to the next slide. And here it's clearer on the back elevation. Again, the right side of the structure um, uh, is where you see the addition on the right drawing. Um, we're holding it back from the corner. Um, and below the existing main roof, uh, e-brine, so really staying subordinate to the to the primary structure. And and cleaning up as much as we can that sort of, uh, uh, multi-tier deck that's happening. Um, that the ground level will will have a similar type of construction where you're on on posts. Um, so that we can maintain some of the openness at that lower level. Um, and, uh, but really taking a small hip roof and staying minimal in in form and 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 its shape. And then one more slide will show the other changes, which is at the ground, on the right drawing, if you look at the bottom left window, we have an egress change there similarly. And then that stair that I pointed out on the first slide, that's that window that gets changed to a French door. So likewise on this east elevation, very minimal in changes. Um, and with that, I will pass the presentation. Oh, sorry, one more drawing. In the rear of the property, the freestanding structure, uh, is a, um, twenty four by twenty two in footprints. And we'll house two enclosed, uh, garage base, um, to those units. And with that, that's all for architectural changes, um, to the property.
Thank you, Eileen. So, um, just as a, so there will be seven exterior parking spaces and four interior parking spaces. We're required to have seven altogether, and we will have eleven. The current site has eighteen. So here's a mind map. So you can see the size of the property. You can see kind of the location of everything and what's surrounding it. So you've got multifamily on the left. And multifamily on the right, both on the State Street and the media right. Um, and then a couple of singles in the back, and then multifamilies in the back, uh, right corner. Next slide, please. So the general special permit criteria for the multifamily use under section ten H seven is whether or not the listed, uh, the table of uses lists the requested use is here. Uh, the property is located in the R three district and multifamily is allowed by special permit. Indeed, the R three district, which is quite small now, is the only district aside from the Smart Grove District where multifamily is permitted. Um, and the proposal is to convert the building from a nonconforming mixed use to the multifamily conforming use by special permit. The next is that the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience and welfare. Here, a multifamily, uh, use is prevalent throughout the R three district. Um, and other than the Smart Grove District, again, it's the most dense district in the city. Uh, the area includes multifamily housing, um, and by including multifamily housing in the R three district, the city is deemed to be desirable, and certainly the location of the property adjacent to the downtown area shows that it's convenient for the health and welfare of the city. The next is that the requested use will not create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Here, obviously, there's uh, sidewalks on both sides of High Street. Um, we're actually reducing, uh, the number of parking spaces required. Uh, the current spaces are required to be eighteen. We're reducing the requirement to seven, although we're providing eleven for guest parking. Additionally, the, uh, the office use has comings and goings during the day where the peak hours for traffic for residential use would be early in the morning and late in the evening. So that is reduced as well. The next is that the requested use will not overload public water drainage or sewer systems. Here, we're adding additional four bedrooms. That would be an additional four hundred and forty gallons per day of water usage. Uh, but you have to subtract from that the current usage for the office space, which would be nominal, but then you, so it's going to be less than four forty. And given the amount of sewer water that we service in the city, we report as a negligible amount and impact on that. Uh, but in addition, importantly, in this instance, um, the stormwater will be reduced uh, by the inclusion of that now pervious area and lawn that's going to be created in that back and the removal of all of that hot top. And I think that's a particular, um, a particular bonus to this development. Uh, the next is, are there any special regulations for the use? And there are none. The next is whether the use will, uh, not impair or the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Here, the R three, the multifamily use is actually allowed in the R three district. We're getting rid of a nonconforming use, which the ordinance will request that we do to make things more conforming. So it is consistent with the integrity and character of the district and particularly the preservation, obviously, of the historic structure. The next is that the requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that use. Again, the R three allows multifamily. There's multifamily throughout there, but there's also singles and twos, so there won't be too many of that. The next is that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And here, this fits squarely within the purpose of the R three, so it is. And then finally, that the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner so as to admit any dangerous, nauseous, or injuries or otherwise objectionable activities. And of course, this is just a multifamily use, so it will. So then we seek a special permit under the D O D, and in accordance with the D O D, um, new construction alterations must be compatible with the existing historic buildings and structures within the D O D. And then there's a set of criteria, um, that we go through. The subject historic building, structure, exterior features, um, are, um, shall, won't disrupt the essential integrity and form of the district or the building. Uh, the lot where it's located or its setting within the D O D. And for new construction and alteration with the end of the D O D, it has to be compatible with size, scale, height, color, material, character, subject to the historic building, the exterior architectural features, the lot where it's located and setting within the D O D. Um, I note to you that the Historic Commission's advisory report says that it does all of this, and it doesn't adversely affect the historic district or building. Uh, we believe that since the addition is actually removing a conglomerate of more modern additions on the rear and making it more uniform, um, that that's actually a benefit. Um, what Eileen didn't say is, um, the current openings in that rear, in the brick in the rear, are staying intact. So under the Secretary of the Interior standards, one of the criteria is that you can actually remove the structure, the new addition, and the old structure would be intact. And so those openings will be intact. They will just be interior windows and walk and doorway. So I think that that's, uh, really important. And also, of course, the addition is subservient to the historic structure, as Eileen, um, discussed. And the proposed garage structure is also like at the very rear of the structure, not really visible. Uh, certainly from High Street, it certainly doesn't interfere with the existing, um, historic structure. And with that, we think the board can make the finding of one through four under the D O D, um, to find that a special permit can be granted. Uh, the next is a special permit for nonconformities. So now that we've gotten the variances, the only nonconformity that exists is the front yard setback and the side yard setback of the existing garage. And for commercial structures or any, uh, building that is three family or above, uh, the special permit criteria is that you can't extend, um, or in intensify any of the nonconformities. So we don't do that at all. We don't touch those at all. So we pass that. The next is that the proposed modifications will not be substantially more detrimental to the, um, to the structure or the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And here, as I indicated before, um, all of the additions are the back. The other modest changes don't impact the nonconformities. And certainly the proposed changes, uh, will not have, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And with that, we would ask that the board grant um, a special permit for nonconformities, a special permit under the D O D, and a special permit for multifamily use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for, yeah, hold on.
Yes, uh, just, um, a question concerning the the existing garage. Is is there any changes to that or exterior material change?
Um, I don't even want to talk about that.
And in addition to that, just what the materials are for the additional garage being built. Does that match the addition on the back of the building?
That is correct, yes. So that will So that will also be a wood frame structure with clavards for the siding and architectural shingles for the roof. For the new structure, the existing garage will actually have the garage doors changed in location. But the materials will likewise be the same as, as the proposed clavard. We'll improve the doors situation and as well as if any windows are, are repaired, they'll also be of a high, high level window to match the rest. And then again, that little piece gets removed off the back that shown.
Where you go. I had a question about the, curious question about the site plan. And when you look at the landscaping on the, I guess, the west side of the property, what is that little bulb that heads back toward the fence? Is that there, is that needed for cars backing out or? Is it where, where it goes with the landscaping? Other side, so again, down, right there, to the right.
Oh, there it is. This, sorry.
Why is, why is that needed?
That, that currently is there as asphalt, yes. So we're, we're actually preserving a little bit more there because there's the, the parking spots right directly above them. But otherwise, we're pulling away, found the bottom edge is the fence line. We're pulling away towards the High Street property and get closer to the house just to get some soft, less asphalt that will soften that, that entry.
I always wondered, that something like that, it seems like this might be hard to maintain, but it gets very narrow like that. So which part I'm wondering about, if I, if I, if it narrows down to a narrow point and then, you know.
It's a good point. There's actually, you can slightly see it, Andy. I don't know if you could point to the, the two lots, actually.
Yeah.
There is literally a connection right, right in there from asphalt to asphalt from property line. So Andy, if you go towards High Street a little bit on that, see how there's that perpendicular line? Yeah, there. That area there is actually connected. There's no fence right in that area. And so, so just bring it up as, as it's just a continuous flow at the moment of, of asphalt.
It's all asphalt.
It's all asphalt.
And then I have another question that's, has nothing to do really with this application, but since you're here. On the front, the front of the house, and I, this is the kind of thing that I would never notice if I hadn't seen a measured drawing like that. The front doors, or the windows are a little bit offset on the front doors. There's no, it's not a symmetrical building. Slide twenty-eight is. So, you know, I was wondering, is that typical?
I don't know if it's typical, but it's true. The left side, I, I had to double check it over and over. And there's a long, deep masonry wall through it. So if you were to lead to the left of the front door, there is a sort of, what I would imagine, a bearing wall that they have put in. And it's, it's back through the building all the way from front to back. So there's some, some curious things there. Typical, I don't know about that, but there's certainly an asymmetry that you wouldn't know until you.
I think I might look at how it's up at that high street for now. Thank you. Are there other questions for the other? Okay, is, if there aren't any, I will open the public hearings. So anybody here who would like to speak to this application. And seeing, there's nobody online?
I've seen any answer destroyed.
Okay, so I will close the public comment period and further discussion or motion?
On the motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities, the special permit for multifamily use and the special permit on the downtown Old West District, with the special conditions from the staff report, which relates to the sidewalk repair. Thank you. And I, I presume all the findings are aligned with the staff report and that it's going to be spoken to during the hearing that is to capture those special. Okay.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, we will do a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Javy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's the end of our public hearings. Moving on to general business, the first item is a request for release of security for the reserve in fact of harm. I understand there's a request for continuance or postponement.
Correct. I think they've asked for the, you know, the exit done. They're hoping that this will wrap up by that time. So I'll, we'll circle back, of course, and then we will, we will give us some activity.
And we don't need to have a vote there?
You don't need to vote for that.
Okay, we're up to reviewing the draft zoning recommendation for ordinance one sixty-four, updating the multifamily use definition and that change and it stayed in the high streets. Has, does anybody have any concerns, questions, comments on the draft? I think the, the point was that we voted at our last meeting and I was, my, my task was to memorialize our. So doesn't need to be a round of discussion unless you find something that you want to add or change.
Sorry, I think in round, it's from, from my point of view. I'm just curious about whether there have been any discussions about the deed restriction.
A great question.
So that's, that's the biggest concern, I think, that.
Sure, I did reach out. We discussed with the butters, we discussed at the second tender with counselors and so forth. This issue come up in various, various formats. I had reached out to the global folks in addition to talking to the local buyer, who's interested, you know, with the purchase and sale here and buying it and pursuing the residential development. Reached out to global, the idea here is to not just have an agreement. The development agreement that was set in place is meant to put out the final box around the type of development that happened there, minimize the extent to which something could be proposed down the road during permitting, it would be problematic. Does that, I think, relatively well. And it's a relatively decent plan that's, that's encapsulated there. Also specifies some particulars about the scope of the architecture and the scale of it. However, this issue of the use of the property came up with the R three district. Although, I'll reiterate here, although I think it's unlikely that there's any more appeals, even if they were to receive an application for commercial use in that district, which is allowed by special permit. I do think it's unlikely that they would be inclined to approve that in the context of everything we've discussed here, in its location in particular, most close to intersection and traffic that might be generated by that. But having said that, recognizing that there is a special permit path, I did reach out to global folks, ask if they are inclined to, or willing to, in order to address this concern and help expedite the council's consideration of zoning after this planned work advisory report, if they would agree to cooperate essentially almost like a fine partner agreement to have something comparable to a development agreement put on the, at the registry on the property. We've talked about mechanics and we'll circle back on that, but we haven't closed that loop. But we, there's things we've started a positive discussion happening on that, that front anyone to get the parties. So we're looking to try to circle back on that. We weren't able to provide an answer today, but we'll certainly circle back to the, to the city council and we'll let you know as well. If that pans out the next weeks, the hope is to return to something that will provide that confidence. So if the council doubts the zoning, there will not be, you know, the user, commercial use is there period, not just through the zoning, but through deed restrictions. So we'll circle back and let you know, but we aren't going to do that.
But as you said, everything that people have expressed or concerned about in terms of potential commuting development, that's all covered with special permit.
Correct. And discretionary, and again, I, I can't, you know, you know, completely, you know, know what the board of appeals will look at here. But, but I think it's unlikely, especially given the several years of discussion about residential. And like I said, the location would be, it might have been not a good location to be there encouraging commercial uses. So I, obviously, if our office was commenting on application, if that were hypothetically, although likely to come forward down the road for some reason, perhaps if any kind of deed restriction, our office would essentially direct that in the S stat as well, yeah.
It also seems that residential uses in Newburyport's market is.
Yes, fair, fair.
We just, we just approved the loss of an office used residential. Any other comments or questions?
Otherwise, I'll just say that I think the, the draft recommendations does, does capture our discussion and the points that we made, especially pertaining to the spot zoning and the concerns about applying that wording change to across the city as far as that zone. So I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a good one.
I agree.
Anything else? I guess I would, as a reminder, I promise, ask for a motion to approve the reported decision to the city council.
So moved, okay?
And I think we're done with properties. That's all. I bet you're going to remain things and so forth. So. So Alden?
Yes.
Yeah.
I am accusing myself of this.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Javy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I believe that's, okay, thank you. Get that out of the way. Okay, next item is people's minutes. So I have not had a chance to review the November fifteenth minutes yet, so we'll put it on the next meeting. But November first, I, I reviewed, Bob reviewed, I know the other people reviewed, any other comments? Have a motion to approve the November first meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the November first minutes?
Case your second? All those in favor, Alden?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I need to abstain.
Okay, because she went here?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Brian?
I have to stay two percent.
Okay, and we're going with this. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to discussion and other updates.
I'm not going to, I can't keep you here long. I would just say that we're continuing to work behind the scenes on the background material and trying to ramp up essentially for our barefoot work we're doing going into early next year. We're interested in doing, obviously, we have to, we have to do the maintain communities on the, for the state. Obviously, we have some benefits about it, but we have to do that. And we, we're also interested in applying for state grants for Story Avenue, so we're looking at that as well. There is a relationship between those two because we can counsel the Story Avenue area as part of that zoning to satisfy the state. So there'll be iterative kind of discussion between the two areas of the city, the four yard district, and sort of going out with that, for maintain communities and possibly other areas of the city like Story Avenue that could be used to satisfy their state requirements. So I think thus far, what we've been contemplating is something very parallel to, or comparable to the four yard district in terms of its permit process or structure, you know, design guidelines, things like that. Recognizing perhaps streamlined sort of the, the question of uses, you know, residential, multifamily has a right, which use has a right, but specifying designer standards and things like that. So I would say roughly comparable to what we've been trying to achieve in the four yard district. I know I mentioned this before, just a lot of, a few other particulars, but the council obviously had to finish up a couple of different things, you know, this year. So it was a little hard to get, especially because they only have one other meeting this month. They have sort of been on this situation issue. So we're doing some background work now to kind of do, you know, presentation material and some initial kind of informal discussions so we can ramp up heavily as we move into January. The council is back in session again and we can establish, it was a working committee on their end and we worked with memberships. Something is sometimes changed, so there are a few members. So, so we'll be circling back on that. And then we have a few folks who are interested in working on, you know, some of this background. This is a great forward, obviously, for all of you, a little deal, so to speak, which is really draft zoning that we proposed through workroom and then bring to the state council for adoption. With the Story Avenue area, for instance, one of the expectations, this was the state grant and everything else, is that by basically spring, we'll bring to the city council a package because we need to show the state what we've worked on and show them that we've brought that package for our consideration by the government.
One of the difficult things is going to be bringing a certain, potentially complex, still being in the city council during budgeting. I think so.
Sure.
Right? It's almost, it's like we almost need to get it by March and we're going to get their attention to it.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, one that is near the discussion, of course, but one of them might be sort of, you know, giving folks a lot of information, walking through as much as we can, also to some extent, giving them time to digest and then deal with the follow up or further, you know, action that they might need or there's further debate or discussion there after the budget cycle, so to speak. Because I do think a couple of months of their time, they may look almost entirely during, you know, that budget period.
Do you, going back to the global situation, do you anticipate, we're going to send this to the council for next Monday night, but do you, you expect that they'll send it to committee and then they'll do two meetings in January?
Well, again, whether or not the state places in January, I move that to the council, of course. My, I think, you know, there's not, I don't think there's a chance of it Monday, you know, the day of voting to council. So I think what will happen is either they'll take that communication and actually receive it in January and have it go to committee. Or more likely, I think, what will happen is we will push it out tomorrow, we'll put the draft, of course, send it out to the council and I assume that on this coming Monday night, they'll receive it, send it to committee and then it'll be carried over to the next session. Some of the communication they receive from you will go with the zoning amendment into January and they will hopefully pick up the discussion with whatever they refer back about deed restriction. And they'd be able to hopefully take those two votes in January and.
I have this, January thirty-first deadline, probably the one I'm hearing.
Is that the deadline? Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
So, yeah, we gotta get on the city council, get on with it.
We'll, we'll communicate as best we can. We'll provide a recommendation for adoption and we're happy to try to address the other concern again, as much as that may be. Protectors, I will circle back to that information. We'll leave it to the council, of course, at that point, if, you know, hopefully folks feeling that issue's been really addressed. And then, of course, it'll be promoting after that, it has to happen, the discretion of the EBA, so.
Anything else? Okay, so in terms of meetings, I think we're going with the council, the January third meeting.
I certainly feel very bothered about being on January third, so.
You can take that up to town. We have talked about having a special meeting to talk about something, but I think, given that we're not, given the point of having a consultant on board yet, we can probably hold that on, on February, something like that.
You are, and I'm also kind of, it's a little bit of a limbo state right now because with the changes of the council happening, you know, starting in January, it's a little bit unclear, sort of, you know, who, who might be having to transition for, who are our contacts and working groups, you know, and everything. So we'll definitely circle back on that and just stay tuned for any more, you know, emails or updates on that front. But when you say the postal forum, we certainly have, obviously, goal discussions and then ramping up more heavily every, you know, in January. I may certainly push out people for the holidays and sort of kind of digest between now and then, just to kind of, you know, pick up a little break, have a little duff, some over these slides. And, and does that defer to both the Story Avenue and the, and the, yeah, probably both, yeah, yeah.
And so because we're canceling the January third meeting, which we would normally have election of officers, I'm calling a snap election for our next meeting now. Because I believe is, what is that, the twenty twenty? And the short campaign season.
Is that, just like, would that be at the beginning or end of the year?
Uh, let's do it at the end of the year, January. And then I just would like to have, because we're canceling the first meeting of the year, I'd like to have the state of officers in place for next year. I want to say that I've enjoyed my first year as chair, my first term. I'm happy to do it again, but if anybody else would like to do it, please feel free. And if anybody, I suppose the same thing is true for vice chair and clerk or secretary. So if you, if you, if you don't want to do it anymore, please let Andy know. But if, if anybody wants to jump into the parade, so be it. So we'll, we'll have that election at the end of our meeting.
So I can't even, am I second in fact, voting for that?
Only if you're running for it.
Definitely not.
There won't. Because you were going to be chairman, right?
Oh, yeah. So close.
Okay, any other questions? Charlie, anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Thanks for doing this, guys.
Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Second, okay. I'm not going to call a roll call. You can.
Thank you.